All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the third of a series of 15 podcasts from the Journal Star editorial board interviewing candidates for the Peoria City Council at-large general election, or primary election this year. I'm Chris Kergard, associate editor, with Dennis Anderson, executive editor.
Hello, everybody.
And Sid Rockregel, sitting member of the city council at large.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming on in. Let me go ahead and get started by asking you this. You've been on the council for a little over three years at this point. You've been through the election process once. Tell us a little bit about why it is you're running again and why on earth you would want to keep this job?
Well, you know, first off, I think there's a lot of good things about what we have to work for, for Peoria. And right now, we're at a time that I think is going to be pivotable in our future. And so I would like to continue some of that work that we've started, especially in with education and being able to partner with the city and our local educational resources, and also building up our economic infrastructure that we have here, which is going to be the key to our future success, as we've just seen coming through our budget cycle.
No question about that. And, you know, one of the big things that we've tried to focus on in some of our reporting has been in the economically downtrodden areas of the city that need some revitalization. And you had talked about wanting to work on focusing on creating areas, you called them common strip centers for service-oriented businesses in those areas of town, as well as dealing with the question of vacant lots in those areas of town by creating programs for new homeownership and light housing. How can the city be involved in that? What exactly is the city's role? What do you want to see City Hall do?
Well, I think there's a lot of things that we can do in there. And let's take those in a couple of separate categories. First off, traditional, we think of strip centers or shopping centers based on the retail side. We know that retail is starting to slow down and decrease. And while there will always be a retail factor, we've got to look at other ways to be able to help revitalize those areas. A nice way is to be able to create some of those strip centers really just based on services, because there is a tendency to be able to do services in an area. You know, if you're dry cleaners and your eye doctor and your other drugstore, and those sorts of services are all together, they can actually not only market and advertise, but you can actually feed off of each other that well. If we go into housing, and that's a very important key, and part of our city is affordable housing, we are one of the largest landowners in the south side of Peoria. And so we've got the opportunity to actually transform those neighborhoods and the economic base from the property value side. And we're seeing, if we look across the country, a lot of different efforts that I think could actually be taken here and improved here, and we could actually create it the Peoria way. We've seen some cities that have come in and developed small, almost the small-scale, small-home sort of living environment where people can have and build equity, but also can, over time, be able to add to that and add size. We've got lots that we could be able to do that. Now, where we fall in is we may need to look at changing some of our zoning, amending some of those regulations to allow those things to happen. We need to be able to partner and make sure that we have some RFPs to be able to put out for a coherent plan to be able to create affordable housing. We've done a nice job in moving this conversation forward, had a public policy session not too long ago that I think was well-received. And one of the things on that public policy session that I think was a little different than other ones is we actually had sort of an education, a common vocabulary that came out for the first couple of hours before we started our discussion. And I think that what you saw there was the council coming together a lot more because of that.
Okay. One other component of this, of course, is the money's got to come from somewhere, and it's not like City Hall is flush right now. What's been the response from either local or regional banking institutions to being willing to offer what I presume would have to be low-interest loans to either a developer doing this, or particularly in the housing, to individuals who may not have all that much money at the start?
You know, one of the things we have in this area is a strong commitment from our local banks. Even though some of those have grown over time and may have more of a regional flavor, they still have a good footprint here in the city. And I think that they are very willing to work with us. What they need to see is a plan coming forward of how we're going to move this, not over a simple individual project, but really how we lay this in over several years.
Okay. And do we have areas identified, specific blocks to start from and build off of?
You know, that would be a plan that we would need to build. And I think that's why it's important to be able to create that comprehensive plan. Right now, we do have some development that's happening both in the East Bluff and in other areas of town. But I think to really be able to have this conversation on the larger level, and to be able to have a multi-year plan so we know where we're going. And I think that that's one of the things that we'll have across many of the conversations on different topics is creating that plan so that both business, banking, residents, organizations that we're going to partner with know where we're going over time.
Just went through a very difficult budget plan for the next year, and saw some layoffs, saw some new fees, taxes have been impacted.
Right.
If you personally could do something different, what would you have done?
You know, one of the things that we have to realize with these budget cycles are, we've got to fix a structural piece. Until I came onto the council, there were several council members who had not even heard the term "structural" as far as the finances go. And what we seem to be doing year after year, and we were in the second year of a budget cycle, which should have been fairly easy to do the way that it's set up, and it wasn't, because the Band-Aids that we keep putting on to get us from one year to the other have not fixed the problem. We are very good at identifying what the out-expenses are in future years, but we have not created the financial wherewithal and the foundation to be able to really tackle those. And as I talk to businesses around it, and I'm talking to residents, and I'm hearing the same thing from both, is they would like to know what the long-term plan is. We know that-
What is that long-term plan?
And that's what I think the council has really got to come together with. Coming up with fines and fees and taxes additional, just to be able to sort of make a balanced budget come through at the end of the year, really is not a plan. A balanced budget isn't a balanced budget just because the revenues and the expenses add up on paper. When it comes to the real world, it has to work. And if those balanced budgets in the past would have truly been balanced, we wouldn't have seen the run on the reserves that we've had and those dwindling down. Those reserves are a very important piece, long-term, for us to be able to happen as an organization. You know, in economic downturns, those are your ability not to have to cut people when economic blip comes in. And by not replenishing those over time, we then create the situation where, you know, if we had an economic downturn here in the next 24 months, which, if you look at what the analysts are saying across the country, is a very good likelihood, we're not set up for that. And so those cuts even become deeper on areas that we know that we need. We need to spend on public safety. We need to spend on infrastructure. So we've got to have the right structural foundation for the city to be able to make that happen.
A problem that the state is facing is people are leaving the state. They're looking for other jobs, or just have the opportunities that's away from the taxes and things that we face here. Well, we're seeing that here also in Peoria, where people in Peoria are moving across the river to Washington or Metamora and that. Just on my own block, there are three people who are on my own. Young block's been only there about seven years. I've seen three neighbors leave, and they all went just across the river to run away from the taxes. What do you tell them? What would you say to say, hey, here's an opportunity, you need to come back and be part of Peoria again?
You know, I think that that's a very good point that you bring up. And of course, in any community, you're going to have some natural movement around. And that's not necessarily always a bad thing. You know, we do have some very good assets for our city. We have a wonderful park system, which is a big portion of our tax bill, but it's something that adds value into our livability. We've got, we do have some taxes that do seem higher, but when you look at the overall amount that you pay to the city for the services that you get, you get a lot of value there. And I think that that's a message we have to also talk about. Another thing that we're seeing is the lifestyle change. By living within the city of Peoria, it puts you close to a lot of amenities that a lot of people like. And I think that that's another piece of that value system. Because if you're driving 20, 25 minutes into the city to enjoy those things that you do, there's also a cost there as well. And so I think that what we need to do is promote what Peoria does very well, which are a lot of things. And then I think we shouldn't be afraid to partner with our region to be able to use that as an asset for people outside of our community to come in. Because you don't just spend your dollars within the community you live. If that were to be true, then Peoria would not be having the sales tax that would come in from other communities. We want people to live in the central Illinois region and come to Peoria to shop and to entertain and to eat.
One of the other things that you talked about is your work in trying to expand the role of an at-large council person, and not sort of wait for an issue to happen, but begin to be involved in district-level issues as well, along with district council people. Take us through some of the things, again, focusing on some of these areas of greater need, that you've worked on as projects in District 1 and District 3.
Okay. Great question. And with that, what we find is council members don't just do their job on Tuesday nights. And I think that, you know, not only do you spend the weeks in between really preparing for those meetings, but it's about those conversations before that may take several months before it ever makes it to the council floor. And a lot of the knowledge and education that happens on those are the things that we do outside of city council. People talk about the hours, how many hours do you spend on city council? It's almost that you don't ever get away from it, because everything that you do within the community in some way impacts that. And I think that that is a unique piece that I bring to the city council. Because for over two decades, having worked within the community, working with education, working with our social agencies, you bring those perspectives in, because as we look to what the next couple of years really matter for the city, it's going to be able to aligning those partnerships together to be able to work for a common goal. There's a lot of great energies that are happening in those spheres. It's a matter of making sure that we all align those for the proper result.
Okay. I want to ask you too, there's been a lot that's been made over the last few years over the 247WallStreet.com rankings, and you suggested some concern with that metric. But the underlying data behind that, and that's been reflected in our coverage, all of the underlying data behind that is absolutely sound on the unemployment numbers, on the crime numbers, on all of the other challenges that are faced within those communities. One of the points that you made in your questionnaire is that it's somewhat of the role of the city to be the, I think you call them, the natural convener, or neutral convener, to bring people together to begin working towards solutions on that. City Hall spent a couple hundred, more than a couple hundred thousand dollars on a study that told us that. They held numerous large-scale and small-scale group meetings. We're still not seeing a lot of results on that. And Peoria continues to make that list every year, and more important, those metrics continue to be terrible for the city and the region every year. When are we finally going to get serious about this?
Well, I hope that we have gotten serious already. And one of the things that I would say about that report is, you know, people would come up as soon as that report came out, and they'd say, well, we can't be number one. We're not that bad, that there are manipulations in the numbers that may have created that. And I think at the end of the day, and my response always to that was, pick another number on that list. Do you want to be number 12? Do you want to be number 15? What about number 5? The fact that that article had to bring up to our conversational level, some of those ideas, I think necessarily wasn't a bad thing. You know, it wasn't the way that we wanted it to be done. Now, any of us that have worked within the community over the number of years knew the challenges that were there. We know that there's an income disparity. We know that there's a housing disparity. We know that, you know, if we look at our region, not just within the city, but within the region that, you know, let's say, United Way serves, that 25% of our housing does not meet adequate standards. That is a number that is real, that didn't just happen with the report or right before the report. Those of us that are working in the community knew that to come forward. What that did is it brought to light the conversation for a more public sphere. When those meetings were held, what we saw are not just people from one or two districts or one or two zip codes pulled together. I think I was overwhelmed by the number of people that came from all over the city, which means that this is an issue, no matter where you live, that you want to see a resolution for. We did convene those, and we are starting to have some policy sessions on important issues. Can we do more? And do we need to do more? We definitely do. And I think that this is where, when we align the budget, we have to align our key resources along those lines. We do have limited funds, but where you place funds also shows what are our priorities within our city. And so we need to make sure that we have funds developed in for those things. We have to put our energies into those. And as a natural convener, because, again, we've got many good organizations within the area. We need to pull all of those together so that we can create a plan for housing, for income disparity, for educational opportunities. And then there's a final piece, which is bring those economic opportunities in, so that once we get people trained, once we get people housed, we have a place to employ them. Because that is the end result of how we sort of correct the situation that we have. But we can't be afraid of the conversation.
And I'm glad you said that, you can't be afraid of the conversation, but we also need to hear something at the end of that.
Yes.
We've been meeting with the community of the Journal Star for five years now, and mostly on the south side and the east bluff, and especially after the first time that the report came out, people in our first meeting right after that, yeah, this is a terrible place for us to live. So, and then after having the city having its own meetings, I'm still hearing from the community saying, what's next?
Well, and I think that's where we have to look at some of the strides. It's only been a very short time since that came out. If we look at-
It's been two years.
Yes, but in 24 months, Align Peoria has come forward on the educational side, which is the ability to bring in businesses, social agencies, various community partners, not to be able to sort of change-
That's led by the school district.
Well, it's in partnership with the school district. And it's bringing in various resources that have been out within the community to be able to support the strategy of the school system. And if we look at just some of the recent successes that we've had through there, there's part of a wraparound center now that is offering various social programs that can help aid those students, because the students today have a lot different challenges than whenever we went to school. We're seeing some internships, and the internships are a little bit different, because we know that that top 1 and 2% in schools are usually very viable to get internships. What we're looking at are those 30% that are sort of in the middle, that need to make sure that we get across that finish line of graduating from high school. So they may not be the first ones who necessarily are getting those internships. What we're doing is finding them a place within the workforce, so that they also have those opportunities. We are seeing other examples with one of the other cohorts within Align Peoria, which are doing the simple tasks of partnering with local eyeglass companies to be able to give eyeglasses to our students. What that does is we know that reading comprehension at third-grade level determines final statistics whenever you're getting close to graduation. And if you can't read, then that hurts the foundation for everything else. Well, we can do the vision testing, but it's expensive, and it's probably something that the school system cannot do, is supply eyeglasses for those that may not have those resources. By having a community partnership where we can provide those, and maybe those eyeglasses are kept at the school to where, when they're most needed for reading, that we can help change those third-grade metrics so that long-term success. So that's just one component in education. When we talk about economic development, we need to look at, you know, are we using the right incentives? And those don't always necessarily need to be dollars. There's a lot of other ways that you can incentivize businesses as well, to be able to locate jobs where they are, where they're needed. Do we have the right retraining and training courses to be able to provide the workforce that we can then align into the jobs that are both available and that could be coming as well? And so those are some of those conversations. On housing, we need to have a, and that's where the public policy piece came out, from the affordable housing, but now we need to create a plan, and be able to have a citywide plan that we can all look at, and that we all know that we can get behind, and be able to see where we can go in five to 10 years. If we look back in the history of Peoria, and if we go back to the '30s, when first sewer systems were really sort of put into place, and I've got this book actually sitting on my desk, and it shows how many septic systems were back in Peoria in the '30s, it took a plan to be able to get us into a, what was then considered a full-city sewer system. Wasn't an easy task, took multiple years. It was one that the businesses came on board with, and churches came on board with, as well as the city. And it's that sort of unity that we've got to be able to know where we're going. It sounds like kind of a bad example, but I think it's a very easy one to see on how wrapping yourself around an idea, as far as a community can move us forward. The conversation has started. We've not done enough. I don't think that we could ever say that we've done enough.
Who's responsible for making sure that there is a plan moving forward?
I think that the city has a leadership role, as well as the rest of our community. If we do this without being in conjunction with the wonderful social agencies that are doing a lot of the grassroots works, we leave out key community partners. We want to have all voices at the table, so that it is a plan that we can put into place, but then one that everybody knows about, but also everybody has had a portion of.
So what's the next step we should be looking for from City Hall on this?
I think that as we look at our strategic plan for the city, this needs to be a very important piece of that, so that that stays full focus on each and everything we do. But again, we come back to the budget. The budget cycle has got to have a place for this to be able to move forward as well.
You mentioned economic development when you were talking just now, and there's a lot of criticism of the way the city handles economic development, particularly criticism of developer welfare. I mean, last night, you guys voted and voted unanimously to expand the city's enterprise zone to two projects that are already announced in greenfields for wealthy developers, a golf recreation center and a retail area up by the former golf course on Northmore. People look at those kinds of things, and they're frustrated. What does City Hall need to be doing differently about economic development?
Well, one of the things that we've done over the past is we have sort of relied on just a couple tools for economic development. Most importantly, I think, is in first, foremost, everybody thinks of TIFs. And we need to look at a full array of economic development pieces and tools. And not all of those are things that we have done over time. And then we've got to look at those tools and align those with ones that can bring in investment from the outside as well. When we have a tool that we put into place at the end of a project, because it's there and available, probably didn't add a lot of economic value. I'm talking to cities where, when you look and talk with their city council members, the number-one focus that they're doing is economic development. Because after economic development, in their minds, comes everything else. And that economic development is not based on one individual, maybe service business or restaurant. It is about living wage job potentials that can create what then would be the spinoff. So if I locate a factory or a business that can employ 50 or 75 people, and those have living wage jobs, then that can then spur off the dollars that grow businesses such as restaurants and haircutting positions, which are then-
Which seems the opposite of what Peoria has done for economic development.
Very true. Yes. And that's why, over my tenure on city council, I've asked those hard questions about, do the numbers really match out? And it shouldn't be an automatic that every time the developer comes to us, that everything is just green-lighted and gone through. We need to ask the hard questions to make sure that those dollars invested are the right dollars.
Do we need to get job commitments, specific job commitments with clawback provision in there for the promises too, if we're giving incentives?
I think we do. And I think that those need to be real new jobs, not just jobs that transfer, but really growing that job base. And then we also need to make sure that some of those jobs are available for those that, right now, would be off the traditional job employment, that we make sure that we're putting Peoria back to work.
Okay. One of the other things, we just closed out a year that had a recent record tying number of homicides. And certainly, there's a question there about police resources and policing tactics for violence overall, as well as the homicides. What more does our police department need to be doing? One of your retiring colleagues has publicly suggested the city needs to adopt stop-and-frisk tactics. Is that something that you would support?
You know, it's not something that I would support. And here's why. I think that the strongest thing that we can do is really build a strong relationship with our police and our neighborhoods and our residents. And the idea of stop-and-frisk probably works opposite in that in many ways. And I think that we know that the factor to be able to have the biggest impact here is probably the early activities that we can do, if we go back to the conversation on 24/7, is growing the city economically so that all the citizens can really have advantage of it, so that we can get rid of this income disparity, so that we can get rid of some of those things that might have an effect that have caused the overall, sort of the we're seeing right now in some of those rates. Will those rates ever fully go away? Probably not, unfortunately. And I don't know that they're indicative of a good police force or a bad police force, because we'll see those change from year to year. What we need to do is work on the root causes of those early on, and be able to make this a city, an area that all citizens have an opportunity to be able to succeed.
Right. And all those changes are laudable, but they take time to implement. Is there anything else the department should be doing in the interim? And, for example, have the resident officer programs had any meaningful impact?
I think that you can definitely say they have. And I think if you talk to the neighborhoods that have had the resident officers, they are very successful. And it has been, again, that relationship-building tool, where people feel that they can come forward and discuss with somebody situations they see even beforehand, before some of them happen. And so I think our dollars invested in the resident program are very well paid off. And we're going to need a multidisciplinary approach to this from the police department and from the city at large. There's got to be a partnership where the relationships are built. A lot of that is done through city council, through what we fund, and we need to make sure that the funding is there, you know, to build a good police force. We cannot have this year in, year out, of what is the number of police officers going to be. Because police officers, just like any city employees, want to make for sure that where they're going, that they've got job security. That goes back to be able to have a budget with a structural condition where we know from year in to year out that we're not going to have to go through, really, what we just did this past six months, which is, are we going to have to be cutting from each department?
And let's go over to the other department there in public safety for a moment, in the fire department, because there's a report that's been commissioned that should, in theory, be coming out soon publicly on the fire department and its work, and where changes might need to be made there, which sets up a battle royal, again, with fire department resources. What changes do you think need to be made there?
You know, first off, we've got, we are very blessed to have a very good fire department. Having trained with them for a day and spent some time with them, I got to see that even firsthand in some of the important work that they do. And I think that as we look at what changes might need to take place to align our resources with our expectations, we need to be able to make sure that we're data-driven. This report that has come through, and I think should be released here very shortly, has some very good data information about what the future sizing should be, what the capabilities. Equipment has changed over the years, and so has the scope of work. What should that right scope of work be for the fire department? Do we need to be sending police cars and fire equipment to each and every medical call? Is there another way to be able to handle those situations? Part of that happens in the call center. Are there some changes that we can make in the original call center, which either may be cut down on time, or can help in the efficiencies of that as well?
Okay. I've got to ask you too, because another component of this debate ends up being the question of the ambulance service and the ambulance service contract. And I want to get you on the record with where you draw the line there on where a conflict of interest steps in, in participating in debate and in voting on those particular issues.
Well, I think what I do on any conflict of interest is I definitely go to our corporation council, and we've had those open and honest conversations since I first went on the council about what and where those conflict of interests would happen.
Okay. And where is the line on that for you?
You know, for myself, talking with corporation council, we've talked about economic interest, and if there is any in there. And also the fact that by using, I guess, a conflict of interest to be able to not have to make a decision could also be- to make a decision, could also be a conflict of interest for the citizens of Peoria.
A quick question on this one. The warehouse district, are you satisfied with the progress of that?
You know, I think we've made some very good progress within the warehouse district. One of the things that the city of Peoria did very differently, even before my time on council, was to be able to do the infrastructure prior to the really building out of the warehouse district. In a lot of cities, it's done just the opposite. Once the building starts, and you've got to come back and do the infrastructure, which can be more costly, and also can then impede some of that progress. I think that we're starting to see this migration of both businesses and residential down. It's one more component that will help sell Peoria as a lifestyle to those who may be from the outside, or to be able to help retain people from moving away as well. Because there are life cycles within our various components of Peoriaans. And so as somebody, you know, we often think about it as the millennial generation moving into the warehouse district. But what we're forgetting is we're also having a lot of retirees, we're having a lot of middle-aged people who just want to do something a little different. They like that lifestyle as well. And so by having, I always like to say that one of the wonderful things about living in Peoria is, we have the options. If somebody wants a big yard and a lot of land that they can go out and spend their weekends on, if they want to be able to have a small condominium, we have that. If they want to have a historic home, they have that. If they want to have a loft, we have that as well. So within a very small area, we have a lot of opportunities for people to define how they would like to live.
I want to, you mentioned historic homes too, and is the city, this was a debate several years before you came on council, but when you were on the Historic Preservation Commission, is the city doing enough and doing it the right way now on working to preserve its historic structures?
You know, a couple of years ago, we made a couple of changes prior to me being on city council, within the ordinance. I think that the ordinance needs to always be relooked at, to make for sure that we are securing our historic future. We see now a value, I think, that probably wasn't placed on historic preservation, probably even 15 years ago. We kind of knew it was important, but then when it came down to the actions that took place on there, it's where people didn't really want to commit to it. I think with what we're seeing down in the warehouse district, what we're seeing on the West Bluff, and in talking with people who are living in the East Bluff, when you talk to the residents of the East Bluff, one of the things that they really love about the area that they live is the historic nature of their houses as well. And so I think that not only for those houses that are protected within the confines of historic preservation, but as far as a community attitude towards it, I think it's very important. Can we do more? Should we relook at that? Probably so. One of the things that we have over time is, we probably haven't continued that conversation with those living in the historic districts, to be able to make sure that we are meeting their needs as well. One of the things that I worked on when I was on Historic Preservation with another member on the commission at the time, was actually going out and working with realtors so that they understood sort of the constraints-
That can and can't.
But also the opportunities. Because what they weren't really aware of is how many cans that there were. And so when they were armed with that information, and then they were showing those houses, it became a lot easier conversation with those, because they weren't afraid of being able to buy in a historic area.
I want to ask you too, one of the other bodies that you serve as council liaison to now is the Civic Center-
Yes.
-authority. How satisfied are you with operations there? I know there have been a series of challenges they've dealt with, with hotels offline, and the questions with the Pier Marquette, and, you know, the difficulty of future booking for conventions and other revenue generating. How satisfied are you with operations there, and particularly on the financial side of operations there? Are you satisfied with their balance sheet and how they're using the taxpayer dollars that are going into operating their facility?
It's a great question. And, you know, you mentioned a lot of things that are important to take into viewpoint on the Civic Center. One is, we have had our challenges, because without all of the hotel rooms online, to be able to support what we could bring in, we have had some questions on conventions that have been reoccurring about whether they will come here, or from those who haven't, about looking about, is there enough capacity there? We recently brought in a new general manager, who I think, if anybody has been sort of looking what has coming out from the Civic Center, has seen this really new pulse beat of a lot of new entertainment, of across a variety of styles that are coming as well. And we're starting to, we're seeing those record-setting paces and numbers again. We just came through our financial audit and had some very good numbers there. We're starting to review some previous month's trends, and we're seeing movement in a very good direction there. The Civic Center, also, as we look at those numbers, we need to look at what the ripple effect of that Civic Center is. And part of that is the livability for the city. Not only from those who go to the Civic Center to attend those events, the number of people that are employed by the Civic Center, but also to the ability for those who look to move or to live within a city or a community that has those resources available. Not everybody may want to go to a particular concert, but the fact that it happens may actually draw in. But then we also see, and most recently, we had a Broadway show that just was gangbusters on being able to help at the box office. And over 40% of the people who came in to see those were from outside the area, which means that their propensity to either eat, to stay in town, was probably pretty high.
How far from outside the area? Because I'm not sure I buy the notion that we had a significant number of hotel rooms booked for coming to see the Lion King.
Well, you know, I'll give you my one-off anecdote, is I saw the play on Saturday night. On Sunday morning, I'm sitting at one of my favorite local eateries, One World, and sitting back on a counter, and the couple next to me had come in all the way from Iowa, from Des Moines, had never been to Peoria before, had come in to see the show, had booked a hotel room, had eaten that night, they were eating at One World. But then, because they started to see the other things that the city had, and they were telling me about their desire to go to the Planetarium, they wanted to go see a movie that was playing, and then they started to talk about the park system as well, because they wanted to go to Bradley Park. They actually ended up booking another night. Now, that may be a one-off, but even when I was chairing the museum, and we were bringing in exhibits like Titanic, we would trend our numbers, and we know that people are coming in from the outside area, from multiple states to be able to see those.
Okay. We're running out of time here. I do want to ask you, your survey responses suggest that you're a little dubious of continuing the cumulative bullet voting, based off of some of the questions on whether or not it's been effective at achieving what it set out to achieve. Is that a fair rundown?
Well, I think what we always have to do is honor what the cumulative voting was intended to do, is we need to have representation around the city council, around a horseshoe that really represents the full city. And that should never be in dispute. The question, you know, Bradley, a couple of years ago, came out with a study on, has cumulative voting actually been able to do this? There was some conversation a couple of years ago about maybe going to more districts and fewer at-large council members. There was also conversation about going to all districts and no at-large. I would probably say that I think there's a very important role for at-larges to be able to play, but we want to make sure that the representation of the full city council really does look like the city of Peoria. By being able to go up to a couple more districts, that may be something that it could do. And I think that as we have those discussions, we've got to look at what that field would look like. I'm not committed to what that plan would be, or if cumulative voting should be changed at this point, but I think that we've got to make sure that we are honoring the original intention of what that court decree really came out with and why it was there, because it is extremely important.
Real quickly, you've got one employee on the council, Patrick Urick.
Yes.
Is he doing a good job?
Well, you know, I think that Patrick is, and here's why. We've got a lot of challenges that we are facing. We've come over a lot of hurdles. And we've got somebody with a lot of knowledge, and who is able to bring his experience to the council. Now, some of the challenges that people say that may or may not be happening by City Hall, I think we've got to look at the city council and to make sure that we have set our priorities correctly. We direct his actions, and we work together with him. And so I think that that is something that we've got to look at. Patrick, he's been good to work with as we look into the future, and we know that we are going to have some economic challenges, both from what we have locally here, but also what could be facing us maybe on a broader country scale as well. You'd rather have that experience to be able to work with than not. And so I think, Patrick, I will tell you that, working with him, he is extremely committed to the city of Peoria. He's extremely committed to answering the questions that the city council and citizens put before him, and he will take our priorities, and he will run with them.
Why you, instead of your competition?
Well, I think that I should be one who is around the city council to be able to work with my competition and those that are on the city council. I think I bring in a very interesting perspective of over two decades of working within the community, but also my business experience and the ability, from organizations that I've actually worked with here, within the city and the community, on being able to help set a plan to go forward. Our financial stability and our financial foundation is the thing that we need foremost to be able to move over the next couple of years. There has been, and I call it a low-confidence quotient by some of our businesses, about whether they will stay, whether they will grow, and also by businesses maybe who are looking to move in. And I think that that's something that I can help with, because I think, Peoria, we have tremendous assets to be able to encourage and grow businesses here. We need to make sure that those are understood and felt. We need to also give those businesses and give those residents a plan that they can see and buy into, that we can be able to work through the challenges that we have for us.
Great. Thank you for coming in. Good luck to you in the February 26 primary election.
Thank you.